Could everybody stand and read the pledge of that place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on our mission, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, go call. Hand duty, this is it. Here. Robert Uwe, Vice President.
Here.
Conconnoisseur Jean-Clair.
Here.
Alex Brownsoff.
Here.
Rich Young.
Yeah.
Fire Chief Gary Bendis.
Here.
Police Chief Robert Tokolsky.
Uh-huh.
And Donald G. Samson. BZH President Matt Long, he's absent. Building Commissioner Steve Tomlinson, I understand, he's already absent too. And Attorney Jeff Regoney's on his way, and I'm present. Diana's here. Oh yeah, Diana, sorry, I missed you, Diana. Present.
About me?
Oh yeah, I got another, I missed one more line, sorry about that.
It was a bigger day.
I have two. You have coffee?
Yes.
Okay, yes. He's got a copy, doesn't he? Yeah. I had two of them. I don't know what I want. I had two of them.
Hand duty.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to read over the November minutes? Not yet. Okay, have you read the minutes?
Oh, I'm reading right now.
Any comments? That way you can finish on the last one. Any comments on last month's minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And John, you want to give us the treasury?
Do you want to take a vote? I need to take a vote.
Okay. Everybody in favor? Four, five? Yes. Okay. Let's do this number first. Okay.
A session of... On December 11th, I don't have a question on that.
We are missing one, John.
Let's check on this one.
That's okay, still.
Okay. Is there another one? It's the grand ones. Have we read them? Everybody had a chance to look over the...
Is there another copy?
I didn't, I passed five, did you? Yeah.
Somebody kept two?
Yeah, for that one. Any of these read?
Yes, please.
Okay, Michigan Shore's Volunteer Fire Department for the fire protection for December, Michigan Shore's Volunteer Department for rental, $105. Thomas Long Beach, $4,597 for police protection. Republic Services for refuse, $3,667.20. Browns Guys, San Francisco, Georgia, whole list. Removing ash tree on Kincaid parking lot, $100. Park, remove large branch over the creek by Oakdale Bridge, $40. Remove large maple tree on El Porton and White Ditch, $650. Mowing parks from October 9th to December 2nd, $500. Fall cleanup, $500, that's both parks. And ground fertilize the parks, $100. Then there's one in here for re-piloting construction for $64,325. There's going to be a hold on the payment until I get the information that state approved the contract. Don't have that signed, I have the one that's not signed. Department of Water Works for the garage, $9.49. Indiana Roll Stone, $9.49 for Kincaid Park. Brenda Heckman, $40.06. Over traveling, the bank and post office. C&amp;A Security, Brenda's bond, $100. My bond, $235. Comcast telephone, uh, not telephone but internet, $69.09. Thanks to Brenda suggesting we check into their fees and we got a lower fee on aside ecological services. That was for the park. The DNR White Ditch for carrying and quarter restoration point, $930. For a grand total of $79,358.54. Thank you.
I have a question, one question, two. Make me grab that branch that was on the rail on the exit. When did you do that? I was going to say, it was down the last 105. And Bob, are you going to report on the road repair later?
Yes.
I have a signed contract.
Bob, I'm not worried about that.
You have a signed contract that's signed by the state officials? That's the one I need. That only, I can work...
I don't have anything like that.
You don't have anything from the state officials? It's supposed to be approved by the state officials.
The only contract I got is the one I signed.
No, I've got a copy of that. And all I need is from the state, but the state officials have approved it and they can approve payment on it.
You got that came in that letter that they sent us with the eighty something thousand dollars?
It's not, I don't have eighty thousand dollars. This time, the one you signed...
I'll ask you about what?
That doesn't have the state official signature on it.
I have no idea about that.
Okay. Can you check it through?
The check that you sent in to re-piloting to submit the final, before I send all this stuff.
According to SBOA regulations, they're supposed to have a contract that's signed by the state as well as us.
Sign that with what?
The state officials. Like they do with our...
All right.
Can you check into it? I've got the form, but there's no signatures on it. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to go over the council meeting minutes? No, we didn't have, they had, they're going over the, okay, December vouchers.
I got a question.
Okay.
Rich, we talked about moving maybe some of the free trees?
That's going to be in, later on in the meeting.
Well, we're paid for something and I think that's part of what we were talking about.
No, this isn't, it's a different thing.
These are the normal, well, taken down the elm trees.
Well, there's a tree review report, let's go on the bills. Okay.
Okay, I moved up to accept the December bills to the tune of $79,358.54. And of course, I'll hold up on the good one because you don't have whatever.
Right, till we get the full information.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have that one?
I should.
Okay. Alex, did you say anything?
Oh, name.
Name, okay. Okay. There are five there, just take one. On the additional vouchers for November, we have NISCO.
I don't have them yet.
Pass them out.
Wait for those to come back.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to the additional for November. NISCO electric for the garage, $42.02. Heat for the garage, $74.04. Streetlights, $33.92. AT&amp;T, $804.63. Doom and repair, $1,496.11. For a total of $1,750.72.
John, how many streetlights do we actually have?
Two. How many?
The one right out here, that's the Michigan City, right? So we got one.
I'm going to go for my TV part.
All right, so we're paying, trying to get some good money on streetlights.
For NISCO?
Think about all the hundreds and hundreds of streetlights.
What, $33?
For two.
That's not bad. We need them.
I know. Okay, Alex moved up to accept the November additional bills, a total of $1,750.72.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any additional things to add to the, for the clerk treasurer's report? No. No? There's only two items on the house. Bob, do you want to give us the police report?
In the month of November, dispatch called, 116, there was 41 walking, we go 3,000 miles. Hours worked, $782, 29 at apps, overtime. 14 hours for training, 15 hours for case investigation. Traffic stops in Michigan Shore number six, one citation, two writ warnings, three verbal warnings. Two suspicious subjects were checked, one suspicious vehicle, three courtesy services, and reports of one theft report, that was the house with the room beside it was stolen off the hot floor. It's a strange house, and it's hard to come up with a fourth. Strange.
Thank you. Gary?
So the month of November's done, 144.3 hours on meetings and calls. We had four meetings during the month, two of them are working on the additional here. This is a main, the train being. During the month, we had five calls. 11-1 was on Brookside Drive for control burn. That called him the structural fire. Let's see, 11-9, it was Belt Drive, was CO detector, which was in Michigan City. 11-26, Atai, Old Green Grand East Road, was a brush fire. 11-27, we had a power line down on Michigan, a hundred and thirty drive, and then 11-29 on toilet drive, there's a medical call. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet. We are, actually, we are above our highest run total ever this month. For the toll for here, and then probably due to lots because we picked up going to beach, but a lot has been medical calls. And also, we'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season.
Oh, thank you. Steve, is Steve still here or did he leave?
I have seen a call.
Oh, he did, oh.
Steve called me this morning, hang on. Steve called me this morning, he needs to put a stopper quarter on a job on 3700 block of Michigan Drive. They were exceeding their permit. And he had one or two other permit requests he was considering. He was on a wall of town tonight. I don't know, it's 3700 block of Michigan Drive.
3731.
Steve also contacted me today, so I've got notes again as well as text. The house, and Alex referred to 3731 Michigan Drive, he said.
3731?
3731 Michigan Drive. Okay, and as Alex mentioned, they exceeded, they already exceeded their permit. So he wasn't sure which penalties will be demanded of them yet, but there will be a penalty because they over, they over what they were supposed to do. He also requested that Bob, Bob Tokolsky, the chief, swing by, once in a while to make sure no contractors are ordered. The only difference is, he says, there's a company called Trout Glass that is replacing or is putting glass panels around the deck. So Steve thought that they should finish their work so that later on something would happen, somebody comes falling off the deck, and then the time gets soon because they couldn't finish their, you know, closure. So that was the only one that he approved and they're allowed to finish that up. Then he mentioned the other two issues were Bill and Lori Corosom. The permit was issued on Wednesday, on the 4th of December. And as well, the third issue is Mr. Lanzioni has applied for a permit for a small fence. Correct? And that's a PC. And he, by the way, is having surgery next week on his knee, so he'll be sort of incapacitated for about sixteen seconds of that.
Okay, thanks. And Dolly's not here.
She's in Vegas.
In Vegas? Good. Bob?
Thirty-two hours for the street department, waiting across from the grant, the payment been completed, trying to find one there and get it submitted, so we can see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
How many streets do you play?
We did get, we were allowed at four, they cut virtually through the summer. So we did widening on Pine Wood and Chippewa and all parts. Dog, dog. It's going by, God, I was listening, might be submitted to be the worst trouble to do. I will resubmit first, the next year's grant, hopefully will do it.
Okay, when is that running?
In January, I believe.
Rich Young, he's not here, no.
Yes, he is.
Oh, there he is, duh.
All right, I was put in charge of the agreement we made with Nick. So I'll let Nick tell us about these projects.
Currently, the, when I put the schedule together, I put it in different sections. Couple of sections I've done in months, still remaining mostly that base oak tree that's over by Jennifer Lawrence, House of Prosperity for Jennifer Lawrence. There's a big oak there, the wood's there, and we're tracking, I have to close down probably pothead to kind of bring down, bring down the branches. I just haven't had the time and the personnel to keep the road closed for a portion of time, to catch up my back. And then there's one more on Brookside, but with the guys out there, oh, 10 days ago, with the painting going on, I couldn't get any closer to trucks or the dump trucks in the ground. But I cleaned up some initial trees that were in the park property, and then I submitted proposals to clean up some old trees that fell in all these windstorms that we've been having.
Okay, thank you.
I have got the proposal that you sent in.
Okay.
It's to clean up fallen trees on 3800 Lockup High of Wofford. There's several trees that came down in the windstorm. There's a large oak, 100 foot, 100 feet tall, and several smaller trees. Clean in a large pile on the creek wood side of the road, cut up the hallway and shipped the debris, $1,400. The second one is a corner of Chippewa on Brooklyn, large tree that fell, was uprooted in the windstorm, and took down three smaller trees. Clean up whole area under easement, cut up and chip and hallway debris, taking away root ball, optional, not estimated, $150. That, taking away the root ball would be in addition to $150. But the estimate for the cleanup I just read is $600. One dead cherry tree on the corner of Meadow and Dogwood, it's dead, looks like it's ready to come down, I understand. Cut up, clean up, chip the hallway debris, $400. This may be some of the things that you may want to offset with the trees. I believe there's three trees that were upright property, we're not cutting down, it's in his contract, so that needs to be worked out if you want to do that.
I have a question. Are we replacing those trees?
Don't think so.
I think we should.
It'd be nice someday to it, but I don't, it's not in the mix, you know, but they are big old trees. The ones that came down on Brooklyn, those were kind of unadvisable, they were, they were just weed trees, they were, they were real big. The ones on High of Wofford was just a mammoth maple tree, when it came down, it took everything out of sight down there, so there's going to be a big fall spot right there, so. I mean, if we could ever get, well, I generally get small trees in the spring, but I think the animals would eat them pretty much. We'd have to get some sizable. If there is something that the forest, the state's given away, we could try to maybe get a half a dozen of something or another and put in. I know it's been getting kind of, especially down by the creek, where we put a lot of time and effort with all those ash trees coming down, one right after the other, it's getting a little naked down there. I think with all the plans that we got down there, I think over time, you know, we could definitely dress it up, but it's, you know, that whole area is deprived, the word is right.
Very good, that we definitely need to keep up the force. Yep, keep up the force. Many of us moved up here because of the trees, actually.
True.
Who authorized this cleanup and stuff?
The ones we're talking, nobody's authorized these yet. It's been...
You mean the ones that were done, who authorized it?
They authorized that in a meeting a couple of months ago.
No, no, we made a deal with Mr. Wall to do an absolute number of trees. Good as always additional, who authorized that?
Those are ones that fell in storms.
These are the ones that at the meeting last month, you asked me to get a bid, and since Mick hands the bid to do the third, let me finish. Mick hands a bid to do the trees, according to the contract that he had received. There was talk about, also in the meeting, if you read the minutes, there's also was mentioned about him taking, not taking, but picking up all this debris and getting rid of it and retrieves. And that's why you have this, because the council member, Robert Uwe, he mentioned that maybe we could transfer some of this monies, I mean, some of this work that needs to be done, take it off the original contract.
John, if we, this money that we're paying Nick is out of this year's budget, right? Not next? Can we lose that money?
This could be too. No, it's just, it's appropriation, if you don't use it, it just goes back into the bank.
That we could use later.
Because it's never been taken out of the bank. The only thing, what he's done and turned in for tonight's voucher, that's definitely into, there's enough in there, there's 15,000 in there.
Still?
I have something to say. Before those bids were left, we were supposed to have insurance. All the insurance was supposed to be up to date, all.
They are.
All the stuff's up to date.
Right.
Except for a license plate on this truck.
Which truck is that?
The bucket truck. Doesn't have a current license plate.
Should have, but I'm not looking to.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. Twenty thirteen, I got a citation for junk wreck or abandoned truck, and it had a current license plate on it and always ran. You're running around with a truck with a twenty thirteen license plate on it.
Twenty thirteen.
It's not current.
Okay, whatever, we're going to sit here and fight about it.
It's not current.
That's an issue that can be handled later, we don't need to argue it for tonight.
John, did you send that last one out as a bid, or is Mick the only one that can sign it?
According to which the council decided in last month's meeting, that I was supposed to get bids, but then councilmen, we were mentioned about trading some of this for what already's been done on the contract, what's been done on the contract, what's.
The three trees.
He's not going to do on the contractor's, three trees, so I don't know how we could. So I didn't ask for any other bids, and they're hard to find.
You said, you turned up five thousand.
We got a company that's more than willing to bid on, many times, Bob.
A little anymore.
Oh, okay.
Go through the internet, you know, I know you don't use the internet, I went through the internet and looked for companies in the area. You would not believe some of the reviews on them.
I, I discussed it with several companies, John.
You know, everybody, you know, as a taxpayer of the town, I really try to keep things very economical for everybody, because I know how much money there is, okay? And I do a lot more when I'm doing out there, I'm taking down a little dead ash trees that are littering the road all over the place. So, you know, it's, nobody's getting cheap, you know? I'm giving my best every day to go out there and pull stuff out and see stuff and alert people that there's certain issues that need to be taken care of, okay? So quick on it in my face, okay, Bob?
Okay, let's move on. Okay.
The first bid was on High Waffle, right? The first.
Thirty-eight hundred block of High Waffle, and there's a large part.
I know, that is massive amount of stuff.
There is.
And I know that Sheila, of course, has commented.
It's on her?
Yeah, and the people next to her have commented, and, uh, I think fourteen hundred dollars is very cheap, but if we can get other bids, it needs to be quick, I would say, because we shouldn't wait in the spring to get that up, it is a giant mess.
If you want this done, it could be in coverage till next year with the funds that we have, that wouldn't affect the funds for next year, you know, budget, we'd still have.
I would just like to see it taken care of as soon as possible, and it would probably not be easy for Mick anyway, because he's, because he's doing leaves and his usual stuff, but.
There's not much.
I think fourteen hundred dollars is very reasonable for that. I mean, that's, it's a half a block lawn of trees and debris.
Can you get that done this year, Nick?
No.
I, I, I wish I could say I could.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would certainly try, because I want to get the other stuff done. Crew's working hard to, the way this, this fall has been very different than any falls in the past. Leaves came down late, we've been cleaning up trees, not since, on Michiana property, um, for the county, the whole shoot match, I, I just can't, I'm running myself, dad, trying to get things done. Whatever the council chooses to do, we'll have to do it, um, it's just plain old time, you know, it could take us, it would take a whole crew, a long time for that pile on High Waffle to get moving, but we can definitely get it down, cut up, build stuff to get shipped, and we definitely start working on it. It's just all about mother nature, hopefully we can keep the weather and the snow away, and then we can get, you know, get going on and get it taken care of. But it's, it's a monster.
Like I stated before, if you feel this, and I just don't get it done, then we can incorporate the funds for next year, what's wrong with that?
What?
The main caution to council on is the trees that Mr. Wolf bid for the four thousand dollars were supposed to be done October first, and the trees are still not done, so. That's my.
Let's move on. Okay, you don't want to do anything at this time. Okay, um, Rich Young, do you have a plan commission?
Plan commission met last week, I believe we were all there. Two of the concerns that were brought up, because for those of you that don't know or don't remember, the plan commission more or less pre-approves most permits. So the house talked about it already with the deck, that had the software for, that was brought up, so Steve attended that, and then the other house on the Oakdale, on the east side of, of Hope, there was questions, and we got that straightened out. The bigger part of our meeting was again, this Dan Coffey property that he's trying to build on, right, that.
It's been shadowed.
Oh, that's been shadowed, right over the creek. Uh, now, Dan couldn't be there, so his wife is there with the lawyer, Steve Hale, and when they presented the plan, there were still some questions, especially with setbacks from the property line with the septic, and then there were utility poles and guide wires that were supposedly listed to be moved, but questions about that. And then, uh, because the house at the back end is going to have pillars, there was a big discussion about, and the DNR is stating, right, Rick?
And, and.
Pillars and feel have to be approved by a structural engineer, and they have to be inspected after they're done, so that was another.
And during construction and after.
So the permit was not issued, um, so that was, they're planning to come back next meeting, and I would like to request, I already cleared this with Gary, um, the plan commission normally meets the first Tuesday, but we have a new board coming in, um, there's, I believe only going to be three members, is that what we figured?
Two. There's only two remaining. There's going to be three new council members.
So I'm talking about the plan meeting.
There'll be three new council members on the plan commission.
But they won't be.
I'll let you stay on. They will, they will be appointed at the first of the year.
What I'm saying is that if we have a meeting, they're not going to be appointed till the council meeting, right?
They're already, they're automatic on the council because they won the election.
They're not going to be appointed to the plan commission till the council.
That's correct.
So I would like for the January meeting, and this is mainly because this, this issue with Dan Coffey's been going on for months, I would like to move the meeting, and Gary said it was okay to go to the twenty-first, the third Tuesday, so that on the second Tuesday, the new plan commission members will be there. And we also had, I think, two members that were up for reappointment, one who has served, I think, thirteen years, Dorothy.
Yeah, Dorothy's with us.
Dorothy Nolan has done great service for that meeting, and we will miss her, but she declined to want to be reappointed. And who's the other one that we're going to need to reappoint? So I would like to, it's, it would make sense, because then, even though it would be hard for, let's say, three brand-new council members being on the plan commission and walking, you know, cold turkey right into this Dan Coffey mess, but.
You're asking for you to stay on, the ones that are on it now to stay on it? No, you're just asking to have the meeting changed to the twenty-first.
So that we can make it under, Mr. Gunning, will you be able to make that the third Tuesday?
I agree.
As Gary said, that date was open.
Okay, you're changing the meeting for just January, I, someone's got to get, I'm in their meeting dates for next year, if possible.
Well, that's, the plan commission won't have to do that. We're losing our secretary, which by the way, we need, uh, somebody to take that position, and I believe it's a whopping seven hundred dollars a year.
Oh, great.
But it's twelve meetings, and, uh.
Plus all the other seven meetings.
Yeah, so, and of course, I have been a great secretary, and a long runner for the secretaries we've had, um, but there'll be a basic whole of the plan commission, except for Howard, Matt.
Matt.
And you, if you stay on. And me, if you stand, and then there will be four, this is a secret.
Well, either one of them will be getting different.
So nobody has an objection that we move that meeting?
No.
Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Gunning?
I, I would recommend that you do, although the state statutes with regard to the plan commission appointments specify that the citizen members continue in position until their replacement is installed. The governmental appointees, their term ends with their term of office, which would be December thirty first.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, for just a month in January of two thousand twenty, move the plan commission meeting to the third Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Second.
Who was in favor?
I.
Okay, a couple more things, um, at the plan commission after the coffee, Mrs., Mrs. Hartman and the lawyer, we addressed, uh, the issue of short-term rentals, uh, working on putting together a plan for some control over short-term rentals, should begin with the town's comprehensive plan. Uh, this was the advice of Mr. Gunning, uh, referring to the Indiana State statute that was passed in two thousand eighteen. We have collected information from surrounding communities in Indiana uses prototypes for the kind of plan we can put in place, and this should be a priority for the plan commission in the next year. And then again, the new meeting that will take place, January twenty first. Ray, you'll take on that, please.
Thank you. BCA, yeah, oh, Ray's here, yeah.
There was no meeting.
Okay.
Uh, because the Matt called, called meeting off, though it was on the agenda. The next meeting will have to be decided, although we, we follow a quote call, and pass will be somewhere in February.
Okay. Thank you. And, well, since you're still here.
Okay.
You want to talk about White Ditch?
Drainage Board, meeting, La Porte County Drainage Board, meeting was held this afternoon at two, um, the final line is nothing pertaining to Michiana Schwarz or White Ditch.
Okay, thank you. Dinah, do you have anything to share about the website and stuff?
Yes, okay, just wanted to let everyone know that the email database is updated with all the emails I've received so far, and of course, we're not sending emails out indiscriminately or ever at all anyway, unless there should be some emergency, but I have, that is all updated. Now, I know that there's been, uh, some things that literally slipped off of the homepage, the dates, you know, play, play games, this morning, my, uh, meeting for today was on, the meeting for twenty seventh was off, was off, was not there, later on, the tenth is on, the twenty seventh is off, now the twenty seventh is on, this one was off, it was supposed to go off, so I'm trying to figure that out with the web designers, with the web company or server, so to make sure everything is okay. Now, um, I also wanted to post news about our coming here onto the website, and that would include, um, a notice that we are looking for new members for the various committees, for instance, for the plan commission, uh, for the park board, perhaps, to invite other people on, for, I don't know whether the BCA will get anything, or if anybody's staying on the BCA, but what the questions will be with that. So I wanted to get permission from the council as to, and I want to put this little notice up on to the front page, or our homepage of the website, so that anybody who looks at it can start looking at it and thinking about if they'd like to come to the next meeting that the town council has and volunteer their services, so, okay? Especially the Secretarial Service will need to be, you know, some may take over the plan commission and so forth, so.
Okay.
All right, so that's my request, and other than that, you have questions?
Did you have something to add?
That, that would be fine, uh, I think one of the committee rules from, uh, pre-website existence was that council consent agreement should, should be stopped for content. Uh, with regard to recruitment or advertising, that there's openings on boards and commissions and the like, there is a statute in the plan commission statutes that specifies the citizen members of the plan commission are to be either experienced or have a keen interest in land use and, uh, engineering or surveying, or, or those types of, uh, interest areas, so that it fits with that particular job, so you might want to look at the two-hundred series of the plan commission statutes for that particular, uh, particular one.
Mr. Gunning, do we need a motion to allow her to do?
Um, that's always preferred, so that it's in the record, that kind of protects her if there's a dispute in the future.
Can I move that, we give Dinah the okay to advertise or invite and advertise for the new members of the various committees?
Second.
Okay.
I'll forget the part for everyone.
No, what is this? Paul, say.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So we're down to the job descriptions and the task committee.
Right.
We met, and it went over our particular job descriptions, which one of us had. We need to do further information on as far as the tasks, you know, how important they are, and we've got to put it all together, so.
You're still working on that, so it's a work in progress, yeah, okay. And now the resolutions on some of these ordinances, Mr. Gunning?
Uh, yes, the agenda shows the, uh, e-verify, uh, ordinance that I've been, uh, advertising for a long time. As, as the last one listed, but with your permission, I'll take this first.
Okay.
As I'm on my feet.
Thank you.
This ordinance is all new content or code, and so it's set for in a codified form. However, the substance of this local law is actually little more than a restatement of state statutory law, but it comes from three different sections of the Indiana Code, predominantly, and requires practices and procedures and certifications that, uh, the legislature typically is aware of and probably has to go through the state code each and every time there's an applicable contract or circumstance, um, to make sure that we're in compliance. So what this attempts to do is to compile them, put it in a codification form, and each one in some section will refer to the state statute. will refer to the state statutes so that all of the members and staff people can look those up more readily than going through the burdensome procedure of trying to get to the Indiana Code, get the right sections. And as I always say, the General Assembly changes everything annually on us anyway. So this will protect us in that regard. The council is predisposed to passing that on the same evening that it's introduced. Then we have that two-thirds requirement and unanimous consent to go on to the second reading and the second vote. If you would like, I can give you a reading of the ordinance for the purposes of the meeting. So this is designated as Ordinance Number 2019-07. Short title has an ordinance codifying contracting and bidding policies to include state mandated policies and requirements, including e-verify procedures, liability insurance, and certifications for the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana. The whereas paragraphs provide whereas the Indiana Legislature has created provisions requiring local governmental units to ensure the local governmental contractors were utilizing the federal government e-verify system as set out in the Indiana Code at 22-5-1.7. And whereas contractor or subcontractor on any public works contract with a local unit of government must maintain general liability insurance with limits of no less than $1 million for each occurrence and $2 million in the general aggregate pursuant to the Indiana Code 5-13-10B. And whereas these requirements imposed by state law are requirements imposed upon local government contractors and their subcontractors, the state statutes have given local public agencies enforcement powers pursuant to a different section of the Indiana Code, Section 5-16-14-3. And whereas the Indiana Legislature requires for many local governmental contracts, at the time the contract is awarded or renewed, the person or entity that is being awarded or has the contract must certify in writing to governmental body awarding or renewing the contract. That person is not engaged in investment activities and Iran pursuant to the Indiana Code I'll add that this is also a federal law, but the state is duplicated and imposed on the local government. Whereas a person or entity may not be awarded a contract under 5-23-1, including contracts for professional services, if the person or entity would be disqualified or being awarded a contract for dealings with the government or Iran pursuant to 5-23-1-5. Whereas these state policies are existing requirements of law in the Indiana Code. And the town may adopt rules to regulate purchases of town government generally or to a specific purchase as stated in the solicitation of a purchase, so long as it is not inconsistent with the state's law as provided in the Indiana Code at Section 5-22-3-3. Therefore, be it ordained, adopted, enacted by the town council of the Town of Michiana Shores, a new Article 4 in Title 1 of the Town Code be enacted to provide as set forth. Section 1 creates the addition of the article and then sets forth the chapter titles and designations. Chapter 1 is state law governance. Chapter 2, e-verify policy. Chapter 3, liability insurance required. And Chapter 4, anti-Iran policy. Section 2 of the ordinance is the chapter addition to Title 1 and creates a new Article 4 for contracting and bidding. And it sets forth the chapter's content with an outline of the chapter contents as set forth in the ordinance. It reserves Chapter 5, so it only sets forth the reiteration of the section titles for Chapters 1, 2, 3, and 4. Chapter 1 is state law governance. Section 1 is a recognition of state law policies governing certain contracting and bidding conduct for the town. It was pretty much restated in the whereas paragraphs. Section 1-4-1-2 specifies the use of the e-verify program as provided by state law. Section 1-4-1-3 is the liability insurance requirement for public works contractors. Section 1-4-1-4 is a prohibition on investment or dealing with Iran. Chapter 2 sets forth contractors e-verify and unauthorized alien affirmation requirements, being the establishment of the town policy to comply with the state statutes. And the second section sets forth at 1-4-2-2, which is the town's e-verify policy. Subsection B is the requirement that extends that to contractor affirmations. Chapter 3 is the public works liability insurance requirement, restating the Indiana State public works liability insurance requirement, and then minimal requirements of liability insurance as applicable to the town. Chapter 4 is no Iranian dealing certification requirements, both no dealings with and no investments language. Then the ordinance sections itself continues with the superseding effect and the repeal of conflicting provisions, meaning that this is the latest law enacted, when it's finally enacted, and that supersedes anything in conflict with it. Section 4 is a severability provision that says if we are sued for the content of the ordinance and any specific section is struck down as unconstitutional or inconsistent with the state law, the other provisions survive. Section 5 is a retroactive application and an emergency declaration that this will take force in effect, retroactive to July 1st of 2019. Again, I've expressed that the provisions are already imposed on us by state law. Presumably, we've always followed these. This will just help ensure that we do in the future. And then the enactment language, documenting the date that it's passing.
So we vote on this? Or we can vote on this, right?
Yes, if there's a motion to pass it on first reading, then we'll take the other steps. How did that go this time?
Well, I make a motion that we pass Ordinance 2019-7. As we.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if you go forward, then you have to have unanimous consent of those officials present tonight. You can suspend the rules and vote for the second reading by dialogue.
Can I move that we suspend regular order of business so that we can vote on this second reading by dialogue?
Second.
Okay. Everybody in the room?
Should we ask the public if they have?
Just invite any public comments. It's the second and final reading. This would be the public's opportunity to comment if you're satisfied.
Anybody?
Hi.
Jeff, how many other towns are enacting similar legislation? I get the e-verify part, the Iranian dealing part. I mean, how many other towns in Indiana are doing that?
Most communities have some form of this. Some have all of it. I don't have the enforcement sections in here because I figure this is enough for the council members and clerk treasurer to go to the statute if it ever gets to that point. There's three different sections of Indiana Code. Some are Title 5, which is the state statutes. Some are in Title 36, near the Home Rule section. Some are in Title 22.
I got it.
So some towns do all of it. And, you know, it's like three times the size of this. And other communities just have a sprinkling.
It just seems a little odd.
I can do this more similar to this.
It's all right.
Great, thanks.
When I taught at Law College, a few years ago, they were at Iranian Students Day. So that must be some Iranians floating around.
Let me read the title only, and then you can actually vote.
I don't know if we voted to suspend it.
No, you can vote.
Okay, we have a direct.
You have a motion, but nobody voted. You second it. The rich make a motion. Now you have to vote on it to make a official. Okay. Bye-byes? If you want to take a vote on it, we all? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, everybody's in favor.
Okay. And this is Ordinance 2019-07, an ordinance codifying contracting and bidding policies to include state mandated policies and requirements, including e-verify procedures, liability insurance, and certifications for the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana.
All right, I move that we approve Ordinance 2019-07.
All of us in favor?
On the second reading?
On the second here.
Aye.
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 Second. Jean, you made the motion.
Yeah.
Right, who seconded? Are you, you did?
Didn't.
She did.
Can we have a bye-byes on that? Right, okay. Are we ready to? Any other comments on what we've been talking about just now? Because we want to do White Ditch. Oh, yeah. Dinah?
Sorry.
You want to help us out? Oh, on the website, I'm sorry. No, I'm going to go.
Just a minute.
I'm going to go. Ray, can you tell us?
About the resolution.
Yeah, just give us a minute.
Just one, I guess.
You have to sign it. Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess the next one we agenda is the ordinance for the compensation for your 2024 Town official employee. Okay, the first reading is over. The second reading, you can do it by time.
I don't have a problem with it.
So we're into the second reading on this. Do you want to be prepared for us? Yeah, that'd be nice.
This is Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana, Ordinance Number 2019-07. A continuing ordinance to authorize compensation rates and salaries in the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana for calendar year 2020. Now, for your information here are the 2020 budget rates for compensations. Town Council President, 2,500. Town Council Members, 2,000. Clerk Treasurer, 11,975. Clerk Treasurer for the refuse, 630. The Grant Administrator, 5,000. The Building Commissioner, 5,000. The BCA Chair, cheap, 50 bucks. Road Commissioner, 50 dollars.
50?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 550. Both of the BCA Chair and the Road Commissioner. Park and Recreation Chair, 550. Plan Commission Chair, 550. Plan Commission Secretary, 750. Road Maintenance, 20 dollars an hour. Part-time office, 6,000. Refuse clerk, 2,500 dollars. And that's it.
You're making a motion, Sean?
Yeah.
You made the motion to accept this?
We need a second.
Second.
A second, okay.
Wait a minute.
She made the motion, I mean, I did the second.
But I didn't make the point. I just did, yeah.
He made the motion.
Yeah.
And he seconded.
All right, do it again.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Did we say this is the second reading?
Second, for the second part of reading.
Finally, okay, so we vote.
So all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go ahead. The grant, sign those, it's ridiculous. Just a.
Ray, do you have anything to add to the White Ditch?
No, we went over it, Cam.
Okay.
So we should be able to grant on the bottom of the first page. Very good. No, we go after the repeat.
You don't have to.
I'll stand.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're not, you're not.
That's right, time for Jean to go home.
You had dinner yet?
You want me to continue? Thank you. On the White Ditch, yeah, and the actualization, Page 2, we're still working on that. There's nothing. Still in progress. Still in progress. Still in progress. And on the white ditch repairing corridor, corridor restoration, the final report is due January 15th, hoping we get in before then. Okay. And the white ditch corridor restoration implementation, full proposal is due December 15th. And on the proposal, they are requesting that we have a letter from the council, signed by the president, showing that you are making a request to continue with what has been done on the day 2014 when this was originally developed. And I can go ahead and read the letter. It's to the Lake Michigan Coastal Grants Program regarding the support of Michigan Shores White Ditch Repairing Corridor Restoration Implementation Grant Application. This goes to the advisory board for the Lake Michigan Coastal Grant Program. Back in 2016, the residents of the town of Michigan Shores participated in multiple open public meetings to formulate a long-term strategy to manage our town's public lands. This event resulted in a Michigan Shores Public Land Resource Management Plan of September 2016. The priority components identified in the plan included additional stabilization and restoration of the South Bank of White Ditch, which is underway now, and the restoration of natural areas located south of White Ditch, which this grant application is for. To prepare for this on-the-ground restoration project, the town was successful in securing a Lake Michigan Coastal Grant Program, small grant, to develop comprehensive and holistic restoration plan for 150 feet wide urban repair in the corridor along 1,600 lineal feet of the south side of White Ditch. This area represents approximately 3.5 acres of restoration work. Through a competitive evaluation process, the town engaged applied ecological services to conduct recommended native planting lists, maps, cost estimates, monitoring activities, and maintenance costs. With AES having completed their work on the restoration plan this fall, the town is in a position to seek funding to perform the restoration work. AES conducted two public meetings with town residents, one on July 26th and then October 11th of this year. During both public meetings, town residents expressed support for restoration plan recommendations of removing invasive species and planting native plants. To achieve the consensus of public opinion expressed at these public meetings for performing restoration work, the Michigan Shores Town Council is writing to provide support for the White Ditch Repairing Corridor Restoration Implementation Grant. And as identified in the pre-proposal grant application documents, the town pledges to support this effort financially in terms of allocating town funds towards the local non-cash match requirements of the grant up to the amount of $28,920. The Michigan Shores Town Board is in support of White Ditch Repairing Corridor Restoration Implementation Grant application, and we ask for your support in favor of the Lake Michigan Grant Program. I'm writing this because this was written on behalf of the town council. Okay. To approve it. There are several steps that it has to go through. The first step is to develop RFP for grant contractors to perform the work, have the Lake Michigan Coastal Program approve the RFP, issue the RFP, then you receive and review the RFP, submit it, choose a contractor, have the Lake Michigan Coastal Program approve the contractor, then they issue the contract. That's all within this $28,000.
All right, we should approve your letter, right?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
All right, so I move to approve the letter of our town clerk to the grant...
Into the Lake Michigan Coastal Grants Program for the White Ditch Repairing Corridor Restoration Implementation.
How do you say that?
Okay, all of us in favor? Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
You have bye-byes? Yes. Okay. Paying in Jesus' name, the president, and it will be submitted with the application Mr. Gunny, do you have a report to us?
Yes, I'll take them in the order listed, which the first one is the Eureka Ordinance violation case at 402 El Corral. You should have received this evening a copy of the defendant's answer to the amended complaint with a lot of mistakes. The courts will look to the substance of a document or pleading rather than format it is used. So if you examine this closely, the answer part of the document consists of acknowledgements or admissions or denials or statements to the fact that the defendant is without sufficient knowledge or information to form a sufficient answer comprised of either an admission or denial. But more importantly, they fashion additional claims and allegations which they title as affirmative defenses. But within the affirmative defenses are actually counterclaims made against the town by the defendant. They're, in my opinion, somewhat questionable. They raise a question that the complaint failed to name a necessary party, and I'm not sure that I conceive of a basis for that. They also allege that there is not proper service of documents on the defendant, which is shown in record, the document record, and the court documents themselves all show that service was made throughout on behalf of the town, so I'm not sure what that is getting at. Next, they have an allegation that the town is pursuing this action in violation of the defendant's free speech rights under the First and Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. There's an allegation that the plaintiff, the town, is pursuing the action in violation of the defendant's right to privacy under the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, and the town is pursuing this action in violation of the defendant's right to due process under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment. There's an allegation that the ordinance violation citation case is an action that amounts to malicious prosecution by the town under color of law, and that the plaintiff's efforts in pursuing the ordinance violation case are frivolous. By tiling them as affirmative defenses, it does not change the character that those are allegations and claims against the town. So the burden actually shifts between those allegations to the defendant to prove those statements against the town. Because those are allegations in the form of a counterclaim, even though they're titled as affirmative defenses against the town, we're obligated to notify the town's insurance carrier, which has been done, because that process always takes a good deal of time. We slot on enlargement of time of 62 days, so the answer is not due on this by the town to the new allegations against the town until, I believe, the date of the 26th of January. For the council's information, typically, the town's insurance carrier will review the allegations. In this case, they'll have to look at the original amended complaint that we filed in this particular case. You've heard the old expression that you don't want to make a federal case out of it. I think the defendant here is trying to make a federal case out of it. But my sense is it will fail. I would recommend to the insurance carrier that we file an additional claim that these allegations are frivolous and violate the Indiana frivolous lawsuit statute. That will be our counterclaim, if you will, and our affirmative defense in addition to other defenses that we raise. Insurance companies sometimes will designate the town attorney to continue defending the case and defending against the new claim community against the town. In other instances, they will appoint independent counsel to come in and take over any matters that they deem they are required to defend the town against. There are instances, and you may remember in the last case, where the insurance carrier took apart the claims against the town and said, "We will defend you on some of these, but you're on your own," meaning the town attorney will defend you on others. And I expect that that would probably be the case here, so it'll be a mixed bag. So there's more to come on that. But I did want to report that in the detail I've just given to the outgoing members and any members of the incoming body, we'll probably review that in a executive session right after the first of the year. I've been putting together some notes on some new elected official training or orientation that I'll also put on as I did four years ago with the new members and veteran members of the council. Next item that is listed there is the national prescription opioid litigation, and that is a little bit technical, but I'll try to make it real simple. There've been more than 26 lawsuits filed in the United States through various district courts in the United States against the pharmaceutical companies, the distributors, and retailers of the opioid pharmaceuticals.
But what does that have to do with that?
Because most of the plaintiffs in those lawsuits are cities, towns, villages, counties, some school corporations, health departments, and so on and so forth, that are recovering law enforcement costs, health costs, other expenses. Most of, but not all, of the lawsuits sound in a form of civil RECO, which is racketeering and corrupt influence practices laws from the federal government, to say that these manufacturers and distributors and retailers have acted in concert together. There's a recent trend with these catastrophes that we've been having in recent days, and probably the best one to use as an example is the BP oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico. And so instead of having multiple lawsuits in all the districts where people have been impacted by damages, the federal courts have taken it upon themselves to sort of come up with a new procedure to try to consolidate them together. So the consolidation that has worked here is one that has landed those 26 lawsuits in federal court into one court in Ohio. It's a federal district court, but it's stationed in Ohio. The Ohio court has additionally taken all 26 lawsuits and titled them as a class action lawsuit. And so in the class action order that was issued, the designated plaintiffs were charged with the duty to notify all cities, towns, counties, health departments, states, any other entity that might be interested in making a claim, and informing them that under the class action rules, that lawsuit will take care of everybody's interest. And so if they lose, everybody loses; if they win, everybody gets a cut of the proceeds. Typically, the lawyers are the only real winners because they get the biggest portion of the expenses and burden fees reimbursed. But they have taken most of the jurisdictions in the United States and calculated if they got the judgment that they want to get in a class action lawsuit, they have calculated the town of Michigan Shores would receive roughly $313. But under the class action lawsuit rules, they are required to give every entity the option of dropping out of that class action lawsuit and pursuing their own case, pursuing their own individual damages, which theoretically would be deducted from the main case that is these 26 lawsuits. So the deadline for doing that has come and passed. Municipal attorneys, in a general sense, have certain powers that I have chosen to put into the attorney contract that I have with the town, and it gives me certain discretionary powers in instances such as this to decide, is it in the town's best interest to file papers in the federal court in Ohio to say, "We're going to go it alone if we choose to do so." I just elected to let the date pass, and if they have a great victory and win more and we get a bigger cut in $313, we can celebrate that. If they don't have any success and they recover nothing or something less than the $313, you can all look me up at that future point in time and tell me I made a bad decision. But I did want to share all of that information with the council.
Thank you.
The last item I have for my report is the short-term rental regulations, and as reported in the planning commission report, this was discussed at their last meeting, I informed the planning commission, logical starting place really is to put some dialogue or text into the town's comprehensive plan, because that plan is supposed to serve as a basis of planning. So all of the zoning ordinances and the other regulations in the land use category should come from what's in the basis of planning. So the town will be formulating its opinion on what it wants to do with short-term rental regulations, to the extent that it can do anything. And I've explained previously to the planning commission and to this body several times general and what those limitations are, so I won't go into it again tonight. But the current council and the incoming council has the final control over this. I think it's important for the planning commission to put consideration and language and opinion into the comprehensive plan, no matter what happens. But if the incoming council decides it does not want to pursue this, they can let the planning commission know either in advance of the planning commission sending a draft resolution to the town council, or if they're interested in it, they can send an inducement resolution to the planning commission and cause them to speed things up. The making of amendments to the comprehensive plan... The making of amendments to the comprehensive plan and the draft recommendation to the council are highly statutory, and there's a lot of steps that have to be undertaken in both procedures. There's a requirement on the plan commission that they hold public hearings, at least one on each of the two steps, and then they can proceed in their best wisdom. If they certify a recommended ordinance to the town council and the town council elects not to take action within the statutory time period, that recommendation no longer is a recommendation, it becomes the law. So in that sense, the plan commission is stuck in and become a legislative, a legislative body in that process. If the council decides that they want to do something different, amend or remand the draft recommendation from the plan commission, then they do so, and that's under a timetable. Or they can simply enact, as their own lawmaking, the recommendation of the plan commission. And that completes my report.
Thank you. I knew you.
Okay, any public comments?
Communication, okay.
The what now?
Communication.
Oh, okay. Page here. Oh, from Sheila Carlson? Want me to read it?
I think everybody's got a copy of it, I put it on the minute.
Okay, I mean, I put it on the agenda, but somebody needs to do something about it.
Freddie has called me last night.
Who?
Freddie Shapiro.
Oh, okay.
He spoke to me about it, and we will pick up his leads on it.
Probably Freddie Schindler.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't bother yesterday, and as I wrote the things, they weren't going in the lawsuit she's complaining about.
Oh, okay.
They're going alongside the road, and that way, I don't know what the next people are really were, but they were not mine, they were somebody else's, but they didn't have the equipment to take them away, so we will. I talked to Freddie, and we're going to get him here in the next week or so.
Okay.
We usually do it for Freddie anyway, so it's nobody's.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I would like to ask the president or whoever's going to give the president the town board to put together a letter to NSCO and Comcast to find out a timeline when they're going to remove the poles along Iowa portal that have been cut off, contain the Xfinity lines probably and AT&amp;T lines, so how long this is going to take to get rid of it?
Oh, okay.
That's all on your question.
Okay.
Okay, hi. Actually, we are in the comments, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. Actually, I've got something that I was speaking about with Jean Jackson, and you all know Jean is our town beautifier, you know, working on our program and, you know, the pillar up the front and everything. So anyway, Jean had been speaking with someone from the Army Corps of Engineers and a hyologist, and she suggested, these people suggested that they be very happy to come and do a little presentation for the people here in Michigan Shores about, you know, the larger shores, you know, what's taking place down at the beach and so forth. But the only issue with them is that they can only do this during a week and during business hours. So in other words, this would have to be anything like the meetings we did for the grant, grant proposed or grant decision. So anyway, I just thought it was something that would be worth bringing up here to the council, and I think that we should do something on that. There's so many questions that are coming up, people just ask, they ask, I'm sure they speak with, you know, Mike on the story, I know that they approach me and ask me questions about it. So I think that this would be, it would behoove us to actually invite these people over to give a little bit of an explanation, so that if anybody was interested could come.
Sure.
She should be commended for the declaration of privilege.
Yeah. Thank you, Tynan. Anybody else?
Counsel comments.
Any council comments?
I have one.
Okay.
I want to congratulate the new electees, and I wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Need a ditto for what Alex said.
I have a couple things.
Where?
Yeah, then you finish, okay? I didn't know you, yeah.
Yeah, I've been involved with the town council since 1995, except for the four years of hiatus, and I wish good luck for the new members who are replacing me and Alex. So my best wishes and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I also want to congratulate the new electees. One thing keep in mind, don't trample on people's rights. And also, this has been a very beautiful community ever since I moved out here since 1967. I've been a member of the fire department ever since. I never expected to serve on the town board, but the opportunity came up and I took it. And I really appreciated the four years that I had, and I thank the town for the chance to serve the town once more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I never, you know, ever since I moved here in 1974, always attended the town board meeting, but I never had the ambition to be on it. Just that while I lived in Europe, the Republican, what do you call, believe, whatever.
The what?
The Republican Party, when we had, decided that I should be on the council. So I got in the council because the Democrats didn't put us late. That's the way it went. And it had been, it had been fought, because in the first four years, there was a big controversy with the building of this fire station, but we got it done. So I'm pretty happy with what I did.
Yes, thank you.
So, welcome to the new members, and if you need any help, you can send a call to me.
Okay, thank you. Any other council?
Yeah, welcome again to the new members. Mr. Dunn, at the last meeting, it came up about the house on the beach at Stop 37, which seemingly dumping boulders onto the beach. And I believe we asked for the director to send a letter to the Michigan council?
I don't think it was a direction, I think it was a suggestion, there was no rule on that.
I take it you didn't do that?
I have mine.
It is in minutes from, it's towards the end, I believe.
Right, yes, it says that it was a suggestion, but you didn't make a...
Should we do that?
Well, you want to do it?
Well, I know that they were putting the iron boulders or whatever into the side of that house, and then backing them up with more boulders, because Van Gogh's Schmood or whatever that dredging company was, I saw them right there at the back of the house with the barge. Do we need the director to do that? Because it would come out of...
You could. It creates an interesting factual situation, because that land, as I understand it, is all in Michigan. The rights that are involved are not rights that are owned or possessed by the town as an entity, but it is one that is possessed by the landowners of most of the town, if not all of the town, by virtue of the beach rights that exist as covenants or a license in the land records. So we could certainly send a letter with that understanding that...
Yeah, it says in the council comments in the minute that, and it was me being quoted here, putting boulders, dedicating, maybe a letter written by our attorney to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, abbreviated EGLE, formerly Michigan DEQ, and the Village of Michigan. I'm not asking you to send a letter to the homeowners, Tom, but to the town and to the DEQ or former DEQ.
Rich, I'm not sure of the state line, is the middle of Michigan Drive, and if you prolong it to the beach, I'm not sure the house is on the Michigan side.
It is.
It is on the Michigan side.
There's only a little triangle spot, probably on the left of the right parking area, that is in the Indiana side.
Right, neither side is in Michigan.
Anyway, I would like to move that we have our attorney send a letter to those various entities, not the homeowner. I understand what's, didn't the homeowner say they were going to remove those boulders when they had a change?
Oh, they did in April, but I think they changed their mind when the lakes started taking more and more, they had contacted, no one's contacted them.
Counsel, just real quick, I mean, we can't wait to go over, I mean, there should be kind of a survey to find out how much is actually there. I mean, it looks like it by the size of the eyes, but maybe on paper it's not. We might be putting a carpet full of horse. And those, yeah, it's, they're just a kind of a bystander. The state legal is the one who is promoting this, plus the purple four, there's a more of a personal issue, we'd rather, so we make sure that we have the evidence that the survey and stones are actually on public property, and how much is it on public property before we go and start, you know, wasting our tax money to write these letters to...
I can comment on that a little bit. I contacted the regulator at Eagle, I work with him, so I know who he is. I reached out to him, contacted him, he knows, he's the one who permitted it. Actually, they recommended not to permit it back before the bill, he was a Cuban that time, said it shouldn't happen. He's aware of it, but there's been undated, I mean, that, what's going on, Stop 37, the beds, it is, there are 10,000 other things going on across thousands of miles like Michigan, like here on Lake Superior, Lake Erie, Lake Ontario, they can't keep up, I mean, so we can ride and ride, and nothing's going to happen.
Yeah, they're having a problem, Buffalo's a real problem up there.
Roads are falling in, we're a public building, it's going to be a loss. I mean, a few extra boulders here and there, they can't, it's going to keep up.
There was one in the South River Lake just last week where the porch just teared, the office just teared on the bay.
Okay, at this point, we have on the agenda the swearing in of the new members.
John, I have one more thing.
All right.
I just want to, on the telecast here, advertise that the plan commission is going to be next year in need of a secretary. Again, is it 7:50?
7:50 here.
7:50 here for three meetings, and most of the meetings all last...
Wait a minute.
Twelve weeks. And most meetings all last more than a couple hours. But we've been blessed with some good secretaries lately. So if anyone is interested, they don't have to live in the downtown.
Why don't I go in?
Or retire or something. They can contact the office here, there are junk booths. Now...
Do we have the swearing in at this point? Yeah.
What procedure I thought we could use is I'll go ahead and swear in the clerk treasurer as a nodary public, it's the only authority that I have for that purpose. And then I thought we would have the clerk treasurer then swear in the other two returning members.
I don't know, he said that one to her.
Mine has it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a, two different things. So I'll swear you in first, and I'll ask you to acknowledge that you're about to take your oath of office, and I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your full name.
I, June Lewis.
Do solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
...or affirm...
Or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution...
Support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the State of Indiana...
State of Indiana.
...and that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
...impartially...
Impartially.
...and diligently...
And diligently.
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...of the office of the town clerk treasurer...
Of the office of the town clerk treasurer.
...of the town Michigan Shores, Indiana.
Of the town Michigan Shores, Indiana.
...according to the laws...
According to the laws.
...and the best of my ability...
And the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Can we swear along at one time?
You can do that.
Do you want to get the new ones?
If they're here and, yeah, they're going. I know sometimes political parties will do that, other times...
Well, we had no thought of the election.
No work?
March, it was a block, the election was a block.
That's correct.
Yeah, different communities have all the frivolous...
Well, that's a new, new deal for us.
Some people have family members swear that in, and other people have favored office holders from other positions or fields.
Can everybody see you guys?
That right? Okay. They give you all the boxes, if you want, if you need some refugia in my secretary today. But then there's not somebody else. An individual, not somebody else. Raise your hand. I, the other sign.
I, the other sign.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Indulgently.
Indulgently.
Discharge.
Discharge.
I guess we got the new one. According to the law.
According to the law.
Wait a minute. I'm confused here. Diligently discharge the duties of the office of the town council member.
Diligently discharge of the office of the town council member.
At large at the district.
At large at the district.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
No, you're right.
It sounds good.
It sounds like it's not.
That's right, it's wrong.
Are we done?
But there's a fifth bamboo.
Congratulations, yeah.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
He's only yet our December 27 council meeting man, I mean, council meeting is named as my bounty.
But he's not yet tonight.
Pardon?
He's not yet tonight.
That's correct. We don't have any other business.
I'm moving ahead, sir. Second. All right. Can I?